Thank you Doug. We'll call this meeting for May 10th to order. Laura, would you please call the roll?
Ms. Byer.
Here.
Mr. Boswell.
Present.
Mrs. Danic.
Here.
Mrs. Duncan.
Here.
Mr. Mayhew.
Present.
Ms. Mungard.
Here.
Mr. Schulte.
Present.
And the Open Meetings Act is posted between the two doors by Nebraska statute for those who would like to take a moment to read it. Let's see, special reports, we have the Foundation for Lincoln Public Schools.
We have approval of minutes first.
Oh, sorry, I missed that. Approval of the minutes. You have one set of minutes in front of you with any additions or corrections. Thank you Lanny. Seeing none, they stand approved as printed and posted. Foundation for Lincoln Public Schools, Ms. Wendy Van. Thank you Wendy.
Good evening. Wendy Van, President of the Foundation Lincoln Public Schools. Thank you for all the work that you do in allowing us to work in partnership with the district. I just wanted to share with you that we broke the $1 million cash in hand raised for schools and for students this year. We are at $1.1 million that we have raised this fiscal year, which follows the school year. We're really proud of that. We have about another $100,000 or so, a little bit less than that, in pledges that will come in. A lot of that is Career Academy money, but there's also a lot of money in there that supports individual schools and scholarships and projects throughout the district. We have about, just under 450 funds at the foundation. I like to say we have a fund for every need and a need for every fund, and so we just have lots of things going on. We had about 40 people or so attend a music event last week. Mr. Boswell was there and celebrated all the fine music that we have going on with several of our former educators and donors to the music program. It was a great success and we hope to do more of those into the future. We've so far granted out just under $600,000 in grants back to district projects throughout those funds, and we know that that number will continue to grow as year-end expenses come in for our various funds. I wanted to share with you, it's scholarship season and we have awarded, let me turn my page over. We had 1,458 scholarship applications that were processed through the Foundation for Lincoln Public Schools. Of those, it represents just about 350 students that applied for multiple scholarships. We had 31 family committees, six school counseling committees, four school-specific committees, and one foundation board committee reviewing all of those applications, and they took that job very, very seriously. 113 students have received college tuition scholarships from the foundation, ranging from $160 up to $40,000 for college. We've made 13 educator awards honoring 20 educators and distributed about $18,000 to honor our hard-working educators all across the district. We have had a roadshow basically for the last month and a half, and some of you have been able to come with, and the superintendent staff has just been great partners in coming along and celebrating these awesome, awesome teachers we have. Lots and lots of tears have been shed of just surprise and joy for being recognized, so we're really excited about that. I wanted to share with you a quick story. We have a scholarship program called the Carstens Scholars, and this particular donor has lots of value in education, hard work, and is looking for students that have a certain tenacity and have overcome great hardship, or at least just worked really hard to be successful. So a Carsten Scholar goes through an extra level of rigor in order to be awarded this scholarship. The scholarship is a $10,000 renewable scholarship every year, as long as they stay in good standing with their college or university. So it's a big deal. They wanted it to be a game changer. We've awarded four scholarships this year, four Carstens Scholarships that add to the 11 Carstens Scholars that we have going on right now. So we have a total of 15 students that are getting up to $10,000 a year for their college education. So one of these students was at Southwest High School, and her name was Cameron Sanix. And Cameron is just a remarkable young woman. I mean a remarkable young woman. She's kind of tough as nails. She is an incredible student. She's very, very, very active in her community. She cares about political science and she cares about what happens around her. A remarkable young woman. So when we asked her what's the difference this scholarship was going to make for her, she told us that she's a, her mom's a single mother and has really worked hard for, to support her and her siblings all her life. And she kind of broke down a little bit, and she said, "My mother is no longer going to feel guilty about the education she didn't feel like she was going to be able to provide for me." It was a huge game changer for her. Another student at North Star High School shared with us that his plans was to go on to SCC and become an extrarial or get an accounting certification, and then maybe someday go back on and get his bachelor's degree. When we told him about the scholarship, he thought, "Hmm, maybe I'm going to rethink that." And so we think we completely changed the trajectory of that young man's life just in that morning. So our donors do great work at the foundation, and you've heard me say it before, our district is about all means all, and sometimes at the foundation we're able to say all also means each. And so we can really laser in onto an individual student's particular and individual need and be able to provide just that something extra for them. So thank you so much.
Thank you Wendy. Next up, we have the Backpack Program, Extra Mile Recognition. Sherri Steiskel, would you please come forward, and Scott Young. What a great team. Scott's hard to hide in a crowd.
I'm Sherri Steiskel, the Director of Budget, Lincoln Public Schools, and my other head is being the Coordinator for the Backpack Extra Mile. I'm here with Scott Young, the Executive Director of the Food Bank, who's joining me tonight. We'd like to thank you for giving us this opportunity to give these awards to the three top schools for the Backpack Extra Mile Walk, and I think Scott has a few remarks first.
I always have a few remarks, don't I? I'll make it few, as you saw in the great presentation before the meeting commenced. We're serving over 2,500 Lincoln Public Schools kids in the Backpack Program, kids and families. We have high school markets in seven, well actually there's school markets now, four high schools and three middle schools, and we've got commitments to do another middle school next school year and another high school next school year, so we're adding kids and we're glad to be in that mode. We wouldn't be in this mode if not for the Extra Mile Walk, and so we thank Dr. Joel, of course, and Dr. Sco and Gorley, and Dr. Marilyn Moore, and Sherri Steiskel in particular, Liz Standish and her crew for all of the work that has gone into this, and it's a great reflection on the entire district. You always talk about our kids, and we love that. We love you for it. We're grateful.
Thanks Scott. As you saw in the glimpses, this is our ninth year. We're very proud of that. We had the walk on April 16th. I work with a great group of people, because it's not just me, it's not just Scott, it's all the people at the Food Bank. We have a core team that we work with that kind of advises us. We have the Business Affairs Leadership Team that you saw out there if you were at the walk. Our Communications Team, which provides the glimpses and they do so much more, and then especially the team captains at each building, the departments, they're the ones that take the message and the awareness, because our first priority is not necessarily raising money, but it's bringing that awareness to children in our schools, to staff in our schools, to know that there is a need, that children do go hungry, and we can prevent that. We can help that. Our theme this year was fill their fridge. The graphic on glimpses was perfect for that, and it's based on the book, Matty's Fridge by Lois Brandt. So far this year, we've raised over $152,400 and $1.3 million in nine years, and that's just awesome. That's something that I could not have believed of nine years ago. But that's through the hard work of all of our staff, of you, of everyone out there, the businesses, the community that do this and work with us. Now for the awards. The first one we're going to present is Maxi Elementary School, who took not only the elementary honors, but the highest in our district of all schools. Suzanne Remmers is the principal, the team captains Sherri Kristin and Greg Tebow, and they raised over $15,000, which is a great job. Sherri, if you could come up, and she has a couple of students to talk about it.
Hello, my name is Logan Hoffman, and I am in 4th grade at Maxi Elementary School.
Hi, my name is Julia Hoffman, I'm a 1st grader at Maxi.
Say it one more time sweetheart.
Hi, my name is Julia Hoffman, I'm a 1st grader at Maxi. Each year as we prepare for the Backpack Walk, we participate in many activities to help raise money. This year, we started with a walk-a-thon where we raised our first $4,000. Twice this year, we did hats for hunger. Students brought a $1 donation and were allowed to wear a hat at school. As a member of Student Council, I am proud to say that all money from sales went to the Backpack Program in the month of April. Also in April was the month that students, that actors from the play, Putting in the Grumble, came to Maxi to present our students about the everyday life of a child fighting hunger. I thought, everybody thought it was motivating and informative and made us want to help. We were so happy, wait, Julie and I have always been excited about raising money for the Backpack Program, and that's encouraged, and that's from encouragement by Mr. Tebow, Mrs. Kristin, Mrs. Remmers, and our teachers, and from the beginning, Mrs. Grill. Both of our kindergarten teachers who really explained to us what the program is, and in five years, we've raised almost $4,000 with lemonade stands and going door-to-door. We were so happy that Lincoln Public Schools raised so much money to fill backpacks for students who need food on the weekends. We were happy to do our part to help. Thank you.
Our next school is Lux Middle School, who took the middle school honors. Dwayne Domon is the principal, and team captain is Brent Birch. Lux Middle School raised over $10,000, great job. And I know Brent is here, and so is Dwayne. They may have a few words here.
Well, we did something new this year. We had a talent show to raise money for the Backpack Program, and the talent show, and then our 6th grade, one of our teams did some spirit days where they did some dress-up, they did a hat day. But it was neat to see how the Backpack Program built community within our school in the fundraising. And I know our 6th grade teachers read Maggie's Fridge. It was neat to see some different ways of fundraising this year that built community within our school as we raised funds, so thank you.
And next, we have East High School, who took the high school honors. The principal at East is Sue Casada. The team captain is Jennifer or JJ Dugdale. They raised over $9,000, great job. And I also want to say thank you to Sue Casada for all their work at East High, because they make it so easy to go to their building. Thank you. Thank you, members of the Board of Education, Dr. Joel and the Executive Committee for all your support. We really appreciate it.
Comments? Now's the time in the agenda that we have for public comment. I have some blue cards. And the rules are, you get five minutes, we'd like you to say your name when you begin to speak, and you have five minutes. Once you begin speaking, I'll kind of give you a little notice about the last minute if you're running over. First person on the list is Jocelyn Hayes.
Thank you. Good. I'm Jocelyn Hayes. I am an LPS parent. I am a social worker, and I am the founder and leader of a Spanish conversation group. I have two children. I have a six-year-old daughter who is in kindergarten, and a four-year-old son who is in preschool. And together, we've been learning Spanish for the last three years. It's been amazing to see how excited they are to learn and how easy they can retain the information. So in an effort to advance my own Spanish, I started a Spanish conversation group about two and a half years ago, and recently I learned from one of the members of our group that her niece and nephew attend a dual-language program in Omaha through OPS. And I was super excited to find out about that and want that here at LPS, so my kids can benefit from that. So I started reaching out to people in Omaha through OPS, which led me to various contacts here in Lincoln, including Dr. Teresa Catalano. And from there, I started an online petition to see who else might be interested in a program as such, and I've been overwhelmed by the positive feedback of how many English-speaking families and Spanish-speaking families who want this for their children. So we started a LPS dual-language coalition. We've created a Facebook page, and some of the members of the coalition and I met with LPS officials on April 29th to go over some ideas and thoughts of how we could start a pilot program through LPS. And we are here today to propose a three-year timeline for a two-way dual-language program. And as many people as are here, we would love for this to be a priority for our Ingo-speaking families, Spanish-speaking families, so our students through LPS can be bilingual, multilingual, and we can continue to grow. So thank you for letting us speak here today, and thank you for everybody for being here.
Our next speaker is Ally Muller.
I'm tall. Good afternoon. I'm Ally Muller, the Edith S. Greer Professor at the University of Nebraska-Lincoln. My area of specialization is language acquisition, foreign language education, and I'm a researcher in this area. I just want to spend about three to four minutes talking about some of the cognitive benefits of being a multi-speaker of another language. You may not notice, but I myself am not a first-language speaker of English, and one of the reasons being that I came here as a young child from Germany, and because I was at that critical age, I completely acquired the language, which is exactly what we're trying to do with our dual language. So to get, one of the things that I'm constantly hearing is, and very frequently in the U.S., is concern that spending time in any language other than English may delay acquisition of English, or worse, interfere with school achievement. So in a review of the literature in the field as far as benefits of learning and knowing a second language, many studies have shown that young children can successfully not only navigate, but acquire more than one or two or three languages at the same time. In fact, they benefit cognitively, linguistically, and socially from language processing skills that are inherent when we learn another language. The majority of the language, as I did my literature review to discuss this with you today, is in the area of executive functioning, which is critical. These are critical skills. Executive functioning are the abilities to use cognitive resources, and we know that that equates with school success. Some of these functions include attentional control, working memory, reasoning, problem-solving skills, and the ability to plan. These are all necessary for cognitive control for behavior. As a matter of fact, executive functions are better predictors of later academic achievement than in IQ tests or entry-level reading and math skills, something very few people are aware of. Most recently, non-invasive brain imaging has allowed researchers to study how bilingual conditions changes actual brain functioning. You've probably read about some of that in the newspaper. Petito, in the year 2012, actually studied bilingual infants and demonstrated enhanced brain plasticity and increased language processing skills among infants. Exposure to two languages develop two distinct but connected linguistic systems. All children, including special-needs children, have innate ability to learn multiple languages, and the earlier, the better. Some of the other, beyond the executive functioning skills that are the major thrust for most of the research in this area, I'm going to kind of summarize some of the other cognitive benefits that we know about. We know that if an individual knows a second language, they achieve higher academically. Multiple studies have proven that. Dual language in particular is both beneficial to monolingual English speakers as well as to ELL learners. Language learning is beneficial in developing students' reading abilities, an important area of concern for us. Language learners transfer skills from one language to another, thereby increasing their linguistic awareness in areas such as word recognition and grammar structures. Studies show us there's a correlation between language learning and students' ability to hypothesize in science. We also know that children that learn a second language have higher creativity and show more innovation. There is a correlation between language study and higher SAT/ACT scores. There's also a correlation between high school foreign language study and higher academic performance at the college level. To kind of sum up quickly, basically, a second language, especially effective through dual-language program where two languages are acquired at the same time, increase capacity for learning. They positively influence cognitive development, especially executive functioning and attentional functioning.
30 seconds.
The benefits of bilingual exposure can be generalized across all socioeconomic status. In other words, it's a great equalizer among low-achieving students. They benefit the most from this type of education. So I just want to encourage you to think about this. This is not a financial burden on a school district. Even Fremont has introduced a dual-language program, and now 25% of students are enrolled in dual-language programs across the United States. I hope we can bring us into the 21st century and do the same in Lincoln. Thank you.
Thank you. Janet Ekerson.
Hello. Hi, my name's Janet Ekerson. I'm a Spanish teacher at Lincoln High School, and I'm also the President of the Nebraska Association of Teachers of Spanish and Portuguese. Besides that, I do extensive work with the Lincoln Public Schools Heritage Language PLC. We're the group of secondary educators that teach Spanish for Spanish speakers courses at the middle school and high school, and I want to thank Lincoln Public Schools and the school board for the effort that you've undertaken in the past couple of years to expand the offering of those Spanish for Spanish speakers courses at the secondary level. We now teach them at two different middle schools and at four of the six high schools. So I applaud your effort to support the language maintenance of our Spanish-speaking students in Lincoln Public Schools, but I think we can do better and we can do more. So I want to tell you about a couple of the benefits that an elementary dual-language program could have specifically for the Latino students and families that we serve in Lincoln Public Schools. Latino students are the single largest language minority group in Lincoln Public Schools, and Spanish is the second most common language spoken in the United States. The United States is now the second-largest Spanish-speaking nation in the world, surpassed only by Mexico. I don't think that there's any discussion about how important being bilingual in English and Spanish can be both in our community, in the state of Nebraska, nationally and globally. What we can do for students that come from Spanish-speaking families is first help them to maintain the language that they come to school with. Unfortunately, in our current system, we don't do that. Students who enter elementary school as monolingual Spanish speakers will become English dominant by the time they're in middle school. What this means, that they now communicate more effectively in a language other than the language that they speak at home. So think about what that means to families when students no longer communicate the most effective way in the language that their parents and their extended family members speak. Additionally, and it doesn't have to be that way, we can teach students who come to school speaking only Spanish to speak English and help them maintain their Spanish at the same time. The other thing we can do with a dual-language program is ensure that those students continue to develop grade-level content area knowledge and grade-level language skills in both languages. The students in my Spanish for Spanish speakers classes at Lincoln High are not learning grade-level literacy skills in Spanish. Those students often come to me with very limited literacy skills in Spanish, not comparable to their peers who might have been schooled in a Spanish-speaking country. And what that means for them is that they do not have the linguistic capacity in Spanish necessary to use that bilingualism to their economic advantage in a later career. To use your bilingualism in a professional capacity, you need advanced levels of literacy and not just conversational oral communication. And if we do not give students the opportunity to develop that the way that we do in English, they will not be able to use that bilingualism that they've acquired at home to their advantage and to our advantage in the future. The other thing we can do with a dual-language program to better serve our Latino students and families is engage Latino students and families in education. A dual-language program does not teach students and families that the Spanish language is a problem that we have to overcome with translators, interpreters, and ESL teachers. Instead, it's a resource, and it's a resource that's valued by the entire school community. They're a resource to their peers, they're a resource to their classroom, and their parents are a linguistic resource to the school. I don't think that it would be any surprise that the research suggests that in terms of parental involvement, in terms of student engagement, and ultimate academic success, that Latino students, and particularly ELL students who are served in dual-language programs fare far better than students that are served in English-only programs. I think if the district wants to be far-sided about some of our goals, improving graduation rate, improving long-term academic performance for students that come from minority language backgrounds, dual language is one way we can do that. And I think the district does have enough foresight to move in that direction, the same way we do moving toward expanding early preschool learning opportunities for students, because we know that in the long term, that's going to have an impact on the things that we care about, which is college and career readiness, which is graduation rates. So I think dual language has a lot of potential to do that. I think what this group is asking here for, a pilot at one elementary school, is not too much to ask, and I think that if we're willing to take that step to try, you'll find that there's demand, there's interest, and that you'll see the outcomes that they're seeing in Omaha Public Schools. Omaha Public Schools can show you their data that students who are enrolled in the same elementary school, coming through the same neighborhood, students enrolled in the dual-language part of that elementary school perform better on NISA tests than the students that are not enrolled in the dual-language program, and that controls for home language background, that controls for socioeconomic status. So I think there's no reason that Lincoln Public Schools could not try something that so clearly is good for kids. Thank you.
Next is Cecilia. If I mess this up, I apologize. Tocameja Hatch. And you can pronounce it probably much better than I can. We can teach students who come to school speaking only Spanish to speak English and help them maintain their Spanish at the same time. The other thing we can do with a dual-language program is ensure that those students continue to develop grade-level content area knowledge and grade-level language skills in both languages. The students in my Spanish-for-Spanish speakers classes at Lincoln High are not learning grade-level literacy skills in Spanish. Those students often come to me with very limited literacy skills in Spanish, not comparable to their peers who might have been schooled in a Spanish-speaking country. And what that means for them is that they do not have the linguistic capacity in Spanish necessary to use that bilingualism to their economic advantage in a later career. To use your bilingualism in a professional capacity, you need advanced levels of literacy and not just conversational oral communication. And if we do not give students the opportunity to develop that the way that we do in English, they will not be able to use that bilingualism that they've acquired at home to their advantage and to our advantage in the future. The other thing we can do with a dual-language program to better serve our Latino students and families is engage Latino students and families in education. A dual-language program does not teach students and families that the Spanish language is a problem that we have to overcome with translators, interpreters, and ESL teachers. Instead, it's a resource, and it's a resource that's valued by the entire school community. They're a resource to their peers, they're a resource to their classroom, and their parents are a linguistic resource to the school. I don't think that it would be any surprise that the research suggests that in terms of parental involvement, in terms of student engagement, and ultimate academic success, that Latino students, and particularly ELL students, who are served in dual-language programs, fare far better than students that are served in English-only programs. I think if the district wants to be far sighted about some of our goals, improving graduation rate, improving long-term academic performance for students that come from minority language backgrounds, dual language is one way we can do that. And I think the district does have enough foresight to move in that direction, the same way we do moving toward expanding early preschool learning opportunities for students, because we know that in the long term, that's going to have an impact on the things that we care about, which is college and career readiness, which is graduation rates. So I think dual language has a lot of potential to do that. I think what this group is asking here for, a pilot at one elementary school, is not too much to ask, and I think that if we're willing to take that step to try, you'll find that there's demand, there's interest, and that you'll see the outcomes that they're seeing in Omaha Public Schools. Omaha Public Schools can show you their data that students who are enrolled in the same elementary school coming through the same neighborhood, students enrolled in the dual-language part of that elementary school perform better on NISA tests than the students that are not enrolled in the dual-language program. And that controls for home language background, that controls for socioeconomic status. So I think there's no reason that Lincoln Public Schools could not try something that so clearly is good for kids. Thank you.
Next is Cecilia. If I mess this up, I apologize. Tocaymazahatche. And you can pronounce it probably much better than I can. My apologies.
No, it's fine.
Say it correctly for the record, please.
Okay, so good afternoon. My name is Cecilia Tocaymazahatche, and I speak to you today as a linguistics professor at the University of Nebraska at Omaha. My research area is second language acquisition and heritage speakers. And I also speak to you today as the mother of Matias. Matias was born in the U.S. to bilingual parents. Since my husband and I understand the cognitive, social, emotional, and economic advantages of being bilingual, we seek the same for our son. In terms of him learning English, research has demonstrated that time and time again that children like Matias will definitely learn English because it is the language of his peers and the language of formal education in this country. However, the odds of my son learning Spanish in Lincoln, Nebraska are not too great right now, even though we're raising him in a Spanish-speaking home. Research indicates that children like my son, although having an excellent head start in Spanish, will not continue learning the language if they do not have access to dual-language programs that support the development of both English and Spanish. Without such programs, Spanish-speaking children have difficulty maintaining Spanish and end up losing a great deal of what they learned before the age of five once they start English-only schooling. Consequently, these children grow up to speak some Spanish but lack literacy skills like reading and writing. This is because language skills need to be nurtured both at home and at school. By not having a dual-language program and not teaching the language that children like my son already have know, we are missing a tremendous opportunity to expand the number of Americans completely comfortable with other languages and cultures, which is an asset in today's globalized world. We need to accept that Spanish-speaking children are already here in Lincoln, Nebraska. They are not going anywhere. With each passing day that we do not offer these children a dual-language program, we lose potential fluent speakers. This has long-term consequences for us as a nation and for the individuals who struggle to define their identities and histories if unable to develop the language of their heritage. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Carmen Blum.
Hello, my name is Carmen Blum, and I'm a freshman at Lincoln High School. And recently, I wrote a speech about incorporating a second language into school curriculum beginning when children enter kindergarten, or as I recently learned, it was called the dual-language program. And as a part of the agenda today, I'd like to present this speech to you in order to both inform you more on this topic and present you with evidence about how crucial it is that we launched this program in Lincoln. First, I'll tell you about a few of the benefits of learning a foreign language at a young age. There's a lot of speculation over if when children learn a second language while they're learning their native one, it will inhibit their ability to comprehend their original language. However, according to Frontier Academy, the opposite is true. Children who are on their way to becoming bilingual not only score higher on standardized testing, but they have a higher understanding of their native tongue than children who are not learning another language. It also improves problem-solving, critical thinking, multitasking, encourages creativity, and can produce a stronger memory. Learning a second language also increases children's appreciation of other cultures, which decreases the chance of that child having ignorant views about cultures besides their own. Also, starting children young allows them to develop a similar accent as native speakers, a skill that diminishes by the time they're eight to 12. If you begin after this age, you will forever have a foreign accent. And according to Nandu, studies have shown that children are simply more able to grasp languages, and this is an ability that fades with age. My next point is the massive gap of effectiveness between the current language programs in the U.S. versus most European countries. According to an article published in The Atlantic, less than 1% of all American adults are fluent in the language that they learned in a U.S. classroom. This may be attributed to the fact that most students in the U.S. begin to learn a foreign language at the age of 13 or 14, which is much past the prime years of 5 to 8 for starting to learn new languages efficiently. However, if you compare this to most European countries, where according to the Pew Research Center, students are required to be taking not one but two foreign languages by the time they're 12 to 15, the gap is even more evident. Furthermore, 24 European countries require students to begin their first language around the ages of 5 to 7, which is the exact program that we should have in the U.S. Finally, after all this information, I'm going to tell you not only that it will work, but it has worked in the U.S. as Alexandria Public Schools has demonstrated. The Alexandria Public School system is located just outside of Washington, D.C. They provide children who attend their school system to enter an immersion program. According to the Alexandria Public School website, the program is explained as this: "The dual-language program is designed for families who would like their children to learn another language while receiving the same high-quality academic curriculum as the students without the division. Students who attend the program learn the same material as those who don't. A typical day in the program is split into two halves, Spanish and English. The students learn reading, writing, math, and social studies during the first half of the day in English. They then spend the rest of the day taking another reading and writing class, only this time in Spanish. Most of the children enter the program in kindergarten, coming from homes that speak either primarily or only Spanish and from homes that speak either primarily or only English. However, within two to three years, or by the time they are in first or second grade, they can speak in moderate fluency in a language that they knew nothing of coming into the program. And by the time they're in fourth or fifth grade, they are forecasted to be fluent in both Spanish and English. If this program was enacted in Lincoln, just imagine the communication boundaries we would overcome." Thank you for your time.
Our next speaker is Trista Williams. Please say your name for the record, and then you have five minutes.
Okay, thank you. Hello, my name is Trista Williams. I'm a freshman at Lincoln High School. The summer of my sixth-grade year, I moved to Lincoln, Nebraska, from Seattle, Washington. Throughout most of my years in elementary school, from second grade to fifth grade, I participated in the dual-language program at Wooden Elementary. It was one of the most amazing experiences I have ever had. Although I started a few years late, most of my friends started in preschool. I was able to catch on quickly because my teacher was very helpful, I loved what I was learning, and on top of that, she helped me to learn what has now become a culture and language near and dear to my heart: Spanish. Today, I would like to talk to you about all of the wonderful experiences I've had participating in the dual-language program, how the dual-language program has benefited me, how it will benefit others, and why all of you should care about implementing a dual-language program in Lincoln Public Schools. Unlike anything else I have ever had the opportunity of experiencing before, being a part of the dual-language program was the best experience. As I mentioned before, many of my friends started in preschool, and although I didn't have the opportunity of learning earlier, being so young, I was able to soak up the information right away. Just starting in second grade as opposed to starting in sixth grade or even seventh grade, as traditional schools do, for a short period of time, was something I wouldn't trade for the world. It was a fact that young developing, it is a fact that young developing brains are able to retain more information and learn new things, like a language, more easily than if you were older. This is why, if you were to implement the dual-language program in any elementary school today, starting at any of the younger grade levels, it would be easy for them to pick up this new skill. Year by year, as we got older, we learned more and more Spanish skills, and all of us native and second-language speakers were fluent in Spanish sooner than the third grade. Half of the day would be in English and the other half would be in Spanish, and we would read and write in both Spanish and English. In fourth grade, we began to learn science in Spanish, and later in fifth grade, we began to learn social studies in Spanish. A typical day of a fifth grader with already six years of Spanish, a part of the Wooden Elementary dual-language program, would include reading and writing activities in Spanish with a math lesson and personal reading time. Work in PE and class discussion. Afterwards, we would head to lunch and bring it back and come back to class. Then our teacher would read a book in either English or Spanish, depending on the language of our previous book. Afterwards, our day in Spanish would begin. Every few weeks, we would read poems and write plays. Oh, no, sorry. Every few weeks, we would have a personal reading assessment to see if we're doing well in the level we were reading in. In Spanish, we would write in Spanish, too. We wrote plays, essays, narratives, and poems. We even learned songs to recite at our annual dual-language concert for our parents. The next part of our day would be learn Spanish in social studies and science in Spanish. And then finally, we'd be able to end the day with anything else our teacher had planned. Being a part of the dual-language program has provided me with so many benefits. I am more likely to get chosen for a job for being bilingual, I'll be able to better communicate with others, and, as my history teacher once said, broaden the lens through which I view the world. When I first found out there was people here in Lincoln who wanted to get a dual-language program going, I was so excited. When I first moved here, I remember thinking it was weird that there was no dual-language programs in Lincoln. Many of my friends were amazed that I was fluent in Spanish and told me they wished they had the same opportunity. This is a chance and opportunity to allow a new generation of LPS students to learn a new language and make a wonderful, to make wonderful memories. If we had to implement a dual-language program into the LPS school systems, there'd be a multitude of benefits. They'd be able to have more job opportunities, they'll be more cultured, and they will have more experiences. This is why, being bilingual myself, I have more opportunities in other Spanish-speaking countries. For juniors, when they take the national Spanish exam, if they have a high enough score, they are able to get the chance and opportunity to go to Spain for free. If you weren't fluent in Spanish, then you wouldn't be able to have this wonderful opportunity. Now, you might be asking yourselves, how can we as staff, adults, and board members benefit from a dual-language program? Or you might even be wondering why this is such an important topic. Because we live in a global economy, our students need to be able to go into the real world and work and learn how to effectively communicate with others. Our city prides itself on being diverse, a melting pot, if you will. However, we are going to be able to say, we can't say this if we don't implement the program to effectively communicate and understand where people are coming from. Not allowing our students the chance and opportunity to have a dual-language program in Lincoln Public Schools is depriving them from a multitude of opportunities and expanding the viewpoint of the world. Thank you very much for your time.
Before I call up the next speaker, I would ask if you're going to be repetitive and repeat the same comments that we've already heard. Everybody raise their hand if they believe everything you already heard, so I kind of get a count here. Or stand up. We kind of think what we've heard is fairly repetitive, so if you're going to repeat the same comments, I'm asking you to try and say something different, then otherwise forego your turn to the next speaker. And did you stand up and tell me you're all for it? That helps me know how many people are here for it. I don't need everybody to speak five minutes to say it. So if you're for this, that gives me an idea. John, would you take a count for me, please? Thank you. That doesn't mean you don't get to speak. It just means if you're going to be repetitive, this saves you having to do it. Sixty-one, thank you. And for all you students that spoke, public speaking is the hardest job in the world, so thank you for taking the courage to do it.
Something different.
Oh, okay. Do you want me to do that one first? Let's finish this. Say your name for the record and begin speaking.
Kristy Hargushheimer. And I won't try to spell it. Sometimes it gets a little complicated. My maiden name was Frosheiser, and when I was teaching ESL, I said that I would make the final exam people spelling and pronouncing my hyphenated name. So I'm just, I am going to say something a little bit different, and that is that I'm caught in some kind of time warp tonight because in 1973, when my youngest son, this is a long time ago, right? When my youngest son was going to enter kindergarten, I enrolled him in the dual-language program at Park Elementary School. At that time, it was Park Elementary School. And I actually went to work there as a para and worked with the teacher Barbara Rocha, who is no longer with us, who was teaching this. And the premise was that they would start in kindergarten. I think he entered the second year of the program. And then the following year, it would go on to first grade and maintain the kindergarten, and then it would just build through the elementary school years. And then, when he finished first grade, able to speak a little bit of Spanish, the grant ran out, and so that was the end of that. But I just want you to know that this isn't the first time that Lincoln Public Schools has entertained this and, in fact, did it. I was also involved with the beginning of the ESL program back in, I think, '75 or '76, and I thought you'd like, I'm digging through, I'm a retired Lincoln Public Schools teacher, and I haven't thrown everything away yet. I'm working on it. I found a lot of yellowed newspaper articles today, and this one from 1980 says that our ESL program, now ELL, had built two over, to a total of 156 students in the district. And I think they were, they said here that there were five and a half teachers. So just think about how important this whole issue has been. And I do want to say that I was delighted to hear that the Spanish-for-native speakers class is up and running. I piloted that in the late '90s at Lincoln High, and then after I left Lincoln Public Schools, that, you know, it faded. Nobody was there to teach it, so I'm glad to see that that has arisen from the ashes as well. I applaud all of you for letting that happen. This did become, dual-language programs became the topic of my PhD dissertation. I'm not going to go into all the reasons. I think Dr. Mueller did that very nicely. But if you would be interested, when I get a little bit deeper into cleaning all of my stuff, I think I have an extra copy of my dissertation. It was done in River City because you're not supposed to name the city where it was studied, but I've heard the name of that town mentioned, or that city, several times tonight. So the research is a little bit old, but I think some of the arguments are still sound. And I did visit a lot of their dual-language programs for my dissertation, so I would be happy to maybe put it in the library here at Lincoln Public Schools. But I just wanted to thank you and give you that little history lesson. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. My name's Adrian Sanchez. Some of you know me already, but I'd like to introduce myself to the rest of the board. I currently serve as chairman of the Nebraska Latino-American Commission, and I also serve on the Governor's Education and Workforce Roundtable. But more importantly, I have a son who will be entering LPS within the next couple of years, so I am speaking on his behalf. For all the reasons stated before me, I'd like to echo those sentiments and formally request that this issue be put on next meeting's agenda.
Monti Fuente Camacho.
And you can tell, right, I'm going to sort of interpret.
Okay.
Yeah.
Buenas tardes. Mi nombre es Montserrat Fuente Camacho.
Good afternoon. My name is Montserrat Fuente Camacho.
Soy profesora de español en la Universidad de Nebraska, aquí en Lincoln.
I'm a Spanish professor at the University of Nebraska-Lincoln.
Y además soy madre de un chico de catorce años que ahora tiene que estar aquí conmigo viviendo y tiene que estudiar en Lincoln.
And I'm also the mother of a 14-year-old son, who, because I am here, is also here and is studying in Lincoln.
Mi hijo toda su vida, desde los tres años, ha estudiado en una escuela bilingüe.
My son, ever since he was three years old, has studied in a bilingual school.
Español e inglés.
Spanish and English.
Y cuando hemos llegado aquí, sorpresivamente, me he encontrado con que aunque el sistema educativo en Lincoln es estupendo, carece de una educación bilingüe.
And I was saddened and surprised to find that coming here to Lincoln Public Schools, while the school system is excellent, it is certainly lacking a dual-language program.
Además, durante mis años de enseñanza en la universidad en España...
And also during my years of teaching Spanish in the university in Spain...
Nosotros recibíamos estudiantes norteamericanos de intercambio...
We received many foreign exchange students from the United States.
...que junto con otros estudiantes de otros países como Alemania, Inglaterra, Francia, etc.
That would come to our programs along with students from European countries like Germany and France.
Venían a nuestra universidad a aprender español.
They all came to our university to learn Spanish.
Lo sorprendente era que los estudiantes... Lo sorprendente era que los estudiantes norteamericanos, sobre todo los estudiantes que venían de Lincoln, tenían un nivel de español muy bajo.
And of all of the students, the students that came to our program, especially those from the United States, and in particular, the University of Nebraska-Lincoln, had very low levels of Spanish language proficiency.
Y ahora que estoy enseñando en la Universidad de Lincoln, me doy cuenta que el nivel es bastante más bajo que las expectativas que se tiene a nivel mundial del aprendizaje bilingüe.
And what I realized, teaching at the U.S. university here, is that the standards for language learning, second language learning, are much lower in the United States than they are in the rest of the world.
Mis estudiantes aquí en Nebraska me han comentado en más de una ocasión que ellos consideran que lo que se estudia durante el high school es insuficiente para conseguir un minor o un major en español.
And what my students tell me is they feel, having come to the university with what they learned in only secondary school, that this is insufficient preparation for those students who want to major and minor in Spanish.
Ya varias personas aquí han hablado de los beneficios a nivel académico, a nivel cognitivo, a nivel laboral, que supone una educación bilingüe.
So others have already spoken about the economic, the cognitive, the academic benefits of bilingualism.
Yo como madre, me gustaría que mi hijo tuviera las mismas oportunidades que tienen otros niños en otros estados aquí en Estados Unidos y en otros países del mundo.
And as a mother, I want very much for my son to have the same opportunities that students in other parts of the country and in other parts of the world have for language learning.
Muchas gracias.
Thank you.
Thank you. Doug Fast.
My name is Doug Fast, and I'm a parent of two, a third grader and first grader. And I want to stand, I stand before you tonight as, from the other side, really. I'm a dual-language failure. I grew up in Canada, where French was required, and I took the bare minimum, the bare, the minimum amount of time. And I can speak as much French as I can German and Spanish, which is extremely little. My sister, on the other hand, was in French immersion. She took geography and history, as well as French, all in French, and she's perfectly bilingual. She's also, has her PhD, and a Fulbright scholar. Maybe there's a correlation. I'm a nurse. My wife is also a nurse. We both work at Bryan. And we are committed to our children learning Spanish, and I'm not sure how we're going